We have to give up our seats in the stands.
Good evening. We're going to attempt to start the meeting. Thank you for everyone to be here. There we go. We do have a quorum present this evening, and I would like to call the November 17th, 2015 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. We have a very special guest with us this evening, Ryan Hinch, a fifth grade student at Sharpsburg Elementary.
That's the principal.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Reading off the list here, I apologize. Nathan Taylor. Thank you, Nathan. If you'll come forward and help us with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
It's ready, Nathan. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Nathan, what can you tell us about yourself that you would like us all to know? And you have a big audience here tonight. Is the mic on?
Play soccer.
Nathan, can you speak into the mic? Sort of step to the side. There you go. Would you like to introduce a special guest that you brought with you tonight? Hi, Tom. Anything else you'd like us to know about Nathan?
I have two cats.
Okay. Is that in a particular order?
That's good.
Very good. Any of my colleagues have any questions they'd like to ask of Nathan? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. We need the approval of the agenda next.
Madam President, I move for approval of the agenda for tonight, November 17th.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. A second.
Second.
That was Ms. Williams. Discussion on the agenda.
Madam President, I move to amend the agenda and add an item six under New Business, making the current six number seven, entitled Superintendent Salary.
Okay. Could you repeat that motion, Dr. Harding?
Yes, I move to amend the agenda by adding an item number six under New Business, which would make the current number six number seven.
Got it.
And the title would be Superintendent Salary.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this amendment? All those in favor of this amendment for approval? Seven zero, and student member concurs. Thank you. We're back to the original but amended approval, amended agenda that Mrs. Fisher put forward. Any other amendments?
Madam President, I move to add, under miscellaneous business, an agenda item, a discussion of the board's recently adopted communication processes and administrative regulations, GBE-E-R, as it relates to Facebook posts, its likes and comment.
Okay. You have that in writing. Is there a second? Does everyone understand the motion as stated?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion on Mr. Ridenhour's amendment? All those in favor? Seven zero, and student member concurs. Did I do something wrong?
I did not vote in favor.
You did not vote in favor. I'm sorry.
I'm opposed to the amendment.
One opposed and student concurred with the majority? Okay. That takes us back to the amended agenda that Mrs. Fisher presented with two amendments on it. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, and student member concurs. Very good. That takes us to the minutes.
Yes, I move for approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Closed session minutes? All those in favor? Seven zero. Any additional minutes?
I move for approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015.
Why are we doing this here, too?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the...
Madam President, I have an amendment.
Ah, sorry.
Copies of the amendment that I'll pass out for my colleagues so they can see what I'm asking for. I move to amend the November 3rd business meeting minutes, page 237, item five, second paragraph, fourth line, remove the sentence that currently reads, "Dr. Harding's asked why a full credit is not provided for one semester of band," and replace that removed sentence with the following, "Dr. Harding's asked why a student could not take just one semester of band during a school year."
Is there a second to this change in the minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Harding, would you like to speak to your motion or stands on its own?
I think it stands on its own.
Okay. Everyone understand the motion?
I think the video will reflect that. It's the question that I asked.
Very good. All those in favor of this adjustment to the minutes? Thank you. Seven zero, and student member concurs with the majority. So, the agenda and the minutes are behind us and we're...
Going to vote on the original motion.
Ah, we have to vote on the original motion. Thank you. A vote on the original minutes? All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. And student member concurs. Well, we can hope it gets no more complicated than that going forward. We're now at board... We're at public comment, and we have quite a few people signed up. If you came late and were unable to sign up, I will certainly recognize you as we finish the listed speakers. Just briefly, I would like to read our policy on KD. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker is limited to three minutes of speaking for him or herself, and five minutes if representing a group or organization. The chairperson reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on any particular topic, provided the issue in question has been presented fairly, and further comments would simply be repetitious. Following a speaker's presentation, the superintendent may designate a staff member to address that individual's concerns. During the agenda item entitled Board Member Response, and that will follow this portion, which immediately follows, board members may elect to offer their own comments concerning topics presented by the public. Each board member will be given three minutes to speak and may not transfer his or her time to another board member. A member who chooses to address the speaker's comments will refrain from initiating a dialogue. Any board member may indicate his or her intention to follow up with the speaker at a later time as an individual board member, but not as representative of the entire board. So with that, we will start with Cheyenne Henson. If you would come forward, please.
Cheyenne, as you come forward, I'd like to just point out to the audience that the room immediately behind here also has a large monitor with sound. It's u-streamed, in case you'd feel more comfortable sitting down. I know you may want to be here. In addition to that, the lobby also is streaming this with sound, if in fact you feel like you'd like to sit down for a few moments and watch the meeting. Cheyenne, please come forward. I'd like you to sit down.
Please have a seat. So you're at...
My last name's Hurson with an R.
I had an H-E-N. I apologize.
Cheyenne, also, the microphone is really for television, so please speak into it. Okay? Thank you.
Well, I'm Cheyenne Hurson. I go to Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, and I'd like to start out by saying that this game of telephone played over the weekend took a turn for the worse. From a debate over the location of the academic hub to the fictitious ideation of Bispa being closed. That being said, I'd like to explain what Bispa strives to accomplish. Over the course of three years, Bispa has taught me the following: to be eager, knowledgeable, to be supportive of one another, and to be a forward thinker. Coming from a middle school where I didn't feel like I ever fit in, I had limited encouragement there, and I never really had a place where I felt like I always belonged. It was always like, go here, go there, and I never felt like I had that opportunity to pursue what I loved. Well, coming to Bispa, I was so overwhelmed with all the opportunities I had because I could sing and not feel like I was being judged, I could pursue my passions, and it was just a blessing to be with people that I felt loved music as much as I did. For example, one of the opportunities that Bispa has brought me was being able to perform at the MSO last year. It was the coolest thing I've ever done. Ms. Elizabeth Schultz is the best conductor I've ever had, and she was so nice. And then recently, for all county chorus, Ms. Carol Kroger came in, and she was the best accompanist I've ever had, and she was just really cool to work with, and without Bispa, I wouldn't have had all these opportunities. So I would just like to thank the opportunity of Bispa, because without that school, I don't think I would have been such a bold person that I am today, and I wouldn't be able to pursue the love I have for music, I wouldn't be able to pursue my love for education as much, and I wouldn't have been so in-depth with my studies as I probably would have at my home school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Appreciate it. Next, we have Kyle Jacobus. Come forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Kyle Jacobus. I am a senior musical theater major at the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, and after hearing some of the negative remarks towards our school, I feel that being silent is no longer an option. The misconceptions surrounding our school, and more specifically, our involvement with the academic hub, need to be addressed. To say that the academic hub would be a waste of time, effort, and money is a slap in the face. There have been complaints that this idea is too much of an investment for such a small group of students, although I personally will never be able to reap the benefits of this academic hub. If Bispa and the other groups involved were to have it as an academic option, we would be able to expand and grow as a school and even a community. Due to the current circumstances of this topic, the students, teachers, parents, alumni, and other supporters of Barbara Ingram have taken to social media posting positive affirmations about the school, the hardworking teachers, and the student body with the hashtag #WhyBispaMatters. I'd like to take a moment to mention some of those tweets that hit close to home for me. Abby Winnick, a senior visual artist tweeted, "My perspectives, experiences, knowledge and knowledge have expanded more in the two years I've been here than they have in my whole life. Most of the students that enroll at Barbara Ingram have little to no experience in their field of study, but every day we are challenged, not just as students but as artists, to look at the situation from different perspectives. We continuously ask questions, do our research, and dig deeper into our arts so that our outcome is not just satisfactory but astonishing." Jeff Ford, a junior instrumentalist tweeted, "Because the only time I'm not stressed out is when I'm playing my instrument. For many of us, our art is our outlet. You will never understand the pure excitement I and many other students alike receive when they enter the doors of the school. None of us are forced to be there, we all want to be there, and we don't just love the arts, we need them." Lastly, Kimberly Parr, a senior vocalist tweeted, "Because everyone deserves to feel safe, loved, and supported through their teenage years, and Bispa provides that for us. Most of us at our home schools don't have that kind of support that we have at Barbara Ingram. We look forward to school knowing that we have a strong support system waiting for us. The friends I have now are people I intend on being friends with for the rest of my life. They're more than just my classmates, they're my family." So, a message to my family, we aren't going to lose Bispa, we already know that. We aren't going to lose each other, and that's not what this is about. I'd say this is even more than us fighting for the academic hub. This is us realizing that we have a voice. Individually, we can be strong, but together, we're even stronger, and through this social media campaign, that's more evident to me than it has ever been. We've had rough days, and I'm sure there will be more, but we can and will never stop supporting each other. I hope I've given you guys a better understanding of what exactly it is we're fighting for, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kyle. Colton Zhang. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Colton Zhang. I'm a freshman vocal major at Barbara Ingram, and I'm just going to start out saying that everyone at Bispa has a passion, and our passions matter. And the academic hub would help us expand our passions and help us broaden our academic and passionate horizons. The hub wouldn't just be for us, it would be for other schools in the community, and we wouldn't be the only ones using it. I've only been at Bispa for a short amount of time, but over this time that I've been there, I've learned lessons that'll help me throughout my entire life and help me be a better son, friend, brother, all these things, and even in the future, a better mentor to my kids, maybe a husband, I don't know.
Be a different order, but yeah.
Another thing has been brought up, that Bispa is unsafe. We have police escorts take us everywhere, we have crossing guards that stop traffic and all these things. We have our administrators, Mr. Hovermill and Mrs. Hunt, back there who walk us through our classes, and I've never seen anybody work as hard to keep a student body safe, more safe, than Dr. Hovermill and Mrs. Hunt. Ninety-six percent of our students last year went to college, and our seniors last year got $5 million worth of scholarships. If we got the academic hub, those numbers could rise. We could become way better students than we are now, and last year, I was not a good math student. I got like 60s in math. This year, I got an 85 in math for my first marking period. That's more academic improvement than I've ever had. And that's, I mean, that just shows that the passion that I have for singing, it helps me do, it helps me relax, and I mean, I sit there and listen to music while I do my homework. I don't know, what do you guys do in your downtime? You watch TV? You listen to music? I mean, right? Without the arts, what would you do in your downtime?
Absolutely.
That's basically all I have to say. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Next is Connie Hastings. Welcome.
Why does Bispa matter? I look around, and I see the students, the parents, the alumni, the faculty, the staff, people that I spent the last four years with, people that have helped me raise my child. It does indeed take a village, a village I would never have seen myself advocating four or five short years ago. My daughter interviewed and refused her initial placement at Bispa after her audition. We shadowed. We shadowed again. We talked to Kyle Weary, the head of the vocal department. We talked to Shannon Kelly Weary, the counselor. We talked to Mr. Thorne, and we prayed. There was an obstacle. I live and work in Frederick, at the Frederick News Post. My schedule did not work for sending a child over two mountains to go to school to learn to sing. How much was I willing to sacrifice for an arts education? My daughter is dyslexic, but she's a musician. She lives music. I knew nothing about Hagerstown. I'd heard all kinds of scary stories about it, and I was scared. I took a leap of faith, a leap that I have never regretted. Mr. Bowman kindly rented me his condo, and above bulls and bears, beautiful place if you've never been there, where I would spend the next three years of my life. For those of you that fear downtown, I assure you, I had a bird's eye view, great seat for the Mummer's Day Parade and all the other activities going on down Potomac Street. Never once did I feel that our students, my daughter, were in danger during their time at Barbara Ingram, time that can extend to 11:00 PM for rehearsals. Before deciding to buy a house and put my money... Before this, I decided to buy a house and put my money where my mouth was. I became a proud Washington County homeowner and taxpayer. Next week, I hope to close on a second home as an investment property in downtown. I believe in our town. I believe in the revitalization of Hagerstown. I believe in the academic hub, but most importantly, I believe in our school. Krista, my daughter, spent four of the happiest years of her life, four of the hardest years of her life, but I promise you, she never regretted the move or her decision. She would be here tonight to talk to you, but she is now a freshman at Westminster Choir College in Princeton. She's there on a full tuition scholarship, singing opera. She sang in all states, all nationals, and got a chance to go to Italy and sing on the stairs of the Scala. That all during her time at Barbara Ingram. Krista's living the dream. She has a future career. She has a goal to return and teach beside her mentor, to sing and conduct and to give back, just like she saw her teachers doing. That is why Bispa matters. It gives our children a choice. It gives them a home, a family of friends and faculty that believe in them. It gives our children a future. It gives our community future leaders, maybe a future school board member. Thank you, Kyle, Shannon, Rob, Tony, Denise, Sherry. The list goes on and on, but the appreciation is unending.
Thank you. Todd Anderson.
Thank you for having me. I am the father of seven children. My oldest is 17, and they go down to three. We have homeschooled our children until my oldest, who's a senior, became a junior, and she wanted to expand her musical talents. And our restriction from sending our kids to public school was because we really wanted to make our children the best people they could be, and we didn't want the influences of other people influencing that. And so we really wanted to raise our children with our beliefs, our values. So sending our kids to public school, and partly was sending our kids to a arts school, because you know, you think, oh, got all these arts people at this school, and you're worried about what might happen at that school. And so that was a challenge for us. And my daughters, I have two daughters there now, by the way, you know, worked hard to audition, they, you know, really tried their best, and they got in, and just that alone has a lot, says a lot about the school, because there's, they challenged the kids, and the academics, my daughter struggled in math so much. So we're not talking about the arts for a minute, because the education that we feel our kids have been given is better than the education we could give our kids with one-on-one education. My daughter has excelled in math because of her teacher at Barbara Ingram. So I believe fully in the level of academics that's being given at Barbara Ingram, but I also, okay, so, and I don't feel like the moral character of my children has been undermined at all, in fact, almost strengthened because of what I'm seeing in the fellowship and the friendships that they've formed and the teachers that have supported that in that school. But on this other side, I'm a real estate agent, and I had a client who wanted to establish a business downtown Hagerstown because he came from Frederick. a business downtown Hagerstown, because he came from Frederick. And he wanted a showroom downtown. And he and his mother actually drove downtown, and they hated it. They were feeling like it was a depressed town. And so, from a real estate's perspective, the academic hub, for me, is so important to add to our community. And, you know, the Board of Education has a great opportunity to be a game player in this, making Hagerstown, I don't know, if you want to say like Frederick, but maybe better than Frederick, you know, I mean, if we're gonna build the arts environment, you know, what a great way to do it. And, you know, you look at those pictures of the modern academic hub, and that man that wanted to establish his business, by the way, he established it in the suburbs of Hagerstown instead of downtown. So, you know, he would have been attracted to that, and, you know, we can be a part of that. And I just, you know, we think about our community, and we have Tech High, and we have, we support Tech High for those folks that want to pursue a vocation in mechanics or nursing or whatever. So, isn't Barbara Ingram the same? We're supporting those folks that want to have a vocation in music. My daughter is applying as a, for music education for her college career, and she's been inspired by the people at Barbara Ingram. So, I think that's enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, there are five seats up front. I know no one likes to sit in the front row, but there are a couple seats if you want to find your way up here. Brian Deo?
Bryn Dow.
Bryn, Brian, B-R-Y-N, sorry for the spelling, thank you.
It's been like my nickname most of my life.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Bryn Dow, and I am a senior musical theater major at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. I understand there's been a lot of controversy over what is to be done with the academic hub. I also understand this controversy has caused some negative light to be shed onto Barbara Ingram. Although it's been made very clear to me by the faculty and staff that we are not in jeopardy of being shut down, I can't sit idly while negativity is being placed onto my school. Without the ability to go to Bisfo, I can't truly say I would still be the well-rounded individual I am today. Bisfo has helped me achieve goals I never thought were possible by always pushing me to be better. Our rigorous arts program don't just help us with establishing a career in the arts. Our arts education helps us plan a career in any field. The arts teach you how to be disciplined, open-minded, and self-motivated. The arts teach you how to be creative, unique, and humble. The lessons I've learned at Barbara Ingram already show up in my day-to-day life. The improv skills I use for interviews, the dance stretches I use for soccer, the voice techniques I use in presentations, and I plan on continually using my arts background when I move on to college, even though I've decided not to pursue an arts career. And that is the beauty of Barbara Ingram. The school has made my passion for the arts greater than ever without forcing me to commit to a career in the arts. When I turned to my counselor and arts teachers at Barbara Ingram and told them I want to pursue a degree in criminology, they said, "That's awesome, what do you need help with?" They didn't pursue me, they didn't push me to pursue an arts major or turn away because I was pursuing something different than an art form. They merely offered a hand, and with their help, I've already been accepted into the criminology departments at both Delaware State University and Indiana University of Pennsylvania. My point is, we need other small specialized public schools like Barbara Ingram, schools that can really focus on each individual student's needs and wants. High schools should feel the way most Barbara Ingram students do about their school, it's a home away from home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul Rothford. Welcome.
On behalf of the students and faculty at the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, I would like to thank the Board of Education for all they have done to make Bisfo an opportunity, and for all of the continuing support they have given to make our program a success. I would like to thank them for their support of a program that has done so much for not only my fellow students and myself, but also for Hagerstown and the Washington County community. The school, being a school of specialization, has taught me many things about the arts, for me specifically, the field of music. And it has given me many opportunities in the area that I could never have received at a normal high school. And this is rightly so, as the school was designed to be different, to allow students who want to spend more time developing their artistic talents blossom in doing just that. I've had the opportunity to take classes such as Advanced Concepts in Music, which has allowed me to learn of the complex relationships between the development of Western music amidst the history of the world, or Chamber Ensemble, where students spend time studying and performing great works of classical literature composed for groups of various sizes, as well as three years of music theory to help me understand the level of mathematics and the pure genius that can be found in music, and to give me the means by which I might create my own. I've played jazz for the inventor of the debit card, I've played Mozart, Haydn, Bach, Mahler, Handel, Beethoven, Mio, Kresten, names you wouldn't normally find in the program of a high school band or orchestra concert. The most powerful performance I can ever recount of being a part of was one with our own symphonic orchestra of the finale of Mahler's Third Symphony. It's what many consider to be one of the most moving pieces ever written, subtitled with the words "What Love Is." And our performance of that piece left the players and the audience in such a state of awe that could not be possibly felt outside of a place where people care so much about what they do. The student, the school was created for this very purpose, to give artistically gifted students who want to learn opportunities to learn about things that they are passionate about. Similarly, I would like to thank the Board for their support of our county's technical high school, which, like Bisfo, is another opportunity for students to specialize their high school education in a field of their choice. Although I'm not a student at this school, I've heard many great things from many students about the programs offered there. This brings me to the debated topic of the creation of the academic hub in the downtown area. This project, although it is quite large, will be supporting the students of the programs I have mentioned, as well as other students in the county. It will not only provide a place for the students of the Barbara Ingram School to have their academic classes, therefore bringing the school's campus closer together, but it will also be a home for other programs, such as the Public Service Academy and others. It will create additional small learning communities that will greatly enhance our students' opportunities. I want to make sure that the Board knows that there is a large group of people in Washington County, which I am a part of, that is very grateful for the creation of the Barbara Ingram School and the county's other specialized learning communities, and that wants to grow these programs in any way that we can in order to make Hagerstown and Washington County a better place culturally and economically. There are supporters of the academic hub here in Washington County, and I am one of them. So, once again, to the Board, I would like to say thank you very much for your support, and I hope that you will continue to show your support for the growth of the community through considering the great opportunity that the academic hub poses. Thank you.
Good on you. Good on you. Paul, stay around a minute.
I'd just like to invite the audience, many may not know this, some of you do, to give Paul another round of applause. In addition to being a great musician, he is a member of the Boonsboro High School's state championship cross-country team. A young man with many talents and diversified interests, so congratulations, Paul.
Thank you. Next is Ryan Minor. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Wilcox. I don't know about you, but I have never seen this room as packed it is tonight, so I keep thinking, I just keep thinking, what if Bisfo was around when I was in high school? And I graduated from Williamsport in 2003. So, just to follow up on a remark made by a member of this Board during the November 3rd meeting, within the context of the discussion regarding the proposed academic hub, I conducted my own anecdotal, totally non-scientific study of the downtown Hagerstown area. So, I strolled through the arts and entertainment district for approximately two blocks around 7:30 this past Sunday evening, and I don't know how, but I left totally unscathed. Mind you, I did go without full-body Kevlar or police escort. So, I'm here tonight, folks, in perfect health.
Point of order.
I'd like to continue, please.
Mrs. Harshman?
I think we were supposed to be focusing on things that would improve the school, not focusing on remarks such as that.
I don't believe anyone's name was used.
And no one would know. I believe that was the rest of it.
May I finish, Mrs. Harshman? Please.
You may.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman.
Mr. Minor, continue, please.
Thank you. So, these photos show Bisfo students walking to and from class, not at midnight or 2:00 AM or at, but at noon on a Tuesday afternoon. They have police escorts. This is the very talented principal, Rob Hovermill, escorting students across the police cars parked out in front. And, you know, I think it's important that our school board members make measured statements that are invariably rooted in fact. Crime is an issue in our community, especially to Maryland, as part of Maryland's sixth largest city, but it's important to put crime into the context and consider that using statistics and facts to make a compelling argument. I would just encourage the downtown naysayers to have a face-to-face conversation with Mayor Geisberts, or the acting Hagerstown Chief of Police, or the Superintendent of Schools, or Bisfo's relentlessly talented and fantastic principal, Rob Hovermill. If you can't have a face-to-face meeting, a phone call would suffice, just don't hang up on when the conversation is complete. Bisfo students began using the social media hashtag, #WhyBisfoMatters, in a campaign to highlight the many wonderful aspects of their school. Maybe we should take a page from the Bisfo Student Strategy and create the hashtag, #FactsMatter. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
I'm one of those naysayers of school board funding and all that. I say I should be, or would have been. As of two years ago, my granddaughter started attending Barbara Ingram. This school, in my opinion, has got to be the best school I have ever seen. I've never heard one teacher complain about their job, I've never heard one teacher not be afraid to stay until midnight to take care of these things that have to be taken care of. The students, they're not students, they're our family. Everybody in this room here is here because we are family, whether we be a baby in our arms or an old man like me. This school, unless you're gonna do something, anything you do to this school, you should always contact and check with the administration. The administration on this school and the teachers are top-notch, not putting any kind of fault against any other school, because I only have this school to contend with. But these are the best teachers, the best students, they have the highest academic standards in their own minds, too, than any other school I've ever seen, and I've seen quite a few schools. My school system, my graduating class was over nine, almost 900 students. We had 2,400 students in a three-year high school. We never had this kind of a family. We had a bunch of students that milled around, and as soon as the bell rang, that parking lot was empty. The teachers, same thing. Bell rings, teachers are gone. Anytime you may want to make a change at this school, keep in mind that you're not messing with students and faculty and staff, you're messing with family. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next, we have Frederica Erith. I probably killed the last name. Thank you, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sounds really loud. Okay, I guess I bring the perspective of not a student, not a parent of a student, but a grandmother, the older generation. We have, my husband and I, had five children who went through the Washington County school system. We, I have teaching in my background, I was previously a teacher. We have run a business, a manufacturing company in this area, so I feel as though I know over time what, over time...
You can back up just a little bit.
That better?
Yes.
Over time, what things are needed to make good productive employees in a company. So, I hope that I bring that perspective to what I say. I was going to talk about what the Barbara Ingram School brings to us, but I think the students have more than eloquently presented that themselves, as well as the parents. So, I'm just going to speak about a couple of other things quickly. One is, I think that you know better than anyone, the, that students excel when they have, when they are where they can express their interests, their compassions, and that can be done a lot of ways, on a football team, in a classroom, with a science project, Barbara Ingram School with the arts. And so, there are many ways for students to excel, and we are so fortunate in this county, and I love this city, I live in the city. We've lived here for over 40 years, and I love the county. And we have many spokes in this wheel. We have the Vocation Center, we have the variety of schools, we have the Barbara Ingram School, which is one more spoke in the wheel. And I think we are very fortunate, and we're very lucky that we have that in this county, and I don't want to see that jeopardized. And I've heard recently that there are naysayers about that and about the hub. So, I guess I am, I want to speak lastly to the revitalization of downtown. You know, when you have students who are down there every day, they're comfortable in the city, they like the downtown. When they are grown up, the chances of them coming back here are so much more when they are a part of downtown. So, the revitalization and the hub down there, and they all, Barbara Ingram, they all go together to make a whole. So, I hope that as a Board, you can all 100% support together this vision and the larger picture of moving our county and city forward, as well as our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Wes, Alan? Welcome.
I haven't been here for 40 years. I'm a new resident, but now that I've heard these people speak and these students speak, I know I made the right decision to move to Washington County. It's impressive, it's amazing.
Welcome.
I haven't been here for 40 years. I'm a new resident, but now that I've heard these people speak and these students speak, I know I made the right decision to move to Washington County. It's impressive, it's amazing. We all know how much power the school board has over the lives of the schools and the children here, but the power also applies to all of us who live and work in Washington County when we have no affiliation with the school. Economically, every decision you make affects us. And watching the development of this, of these meetings, and not coming to these meetings, because a lot of us don't come here, but we do know what's going on, and we do pay attention, we just, we don't come to the meetings, we watch you on TV. Well, with regard to the academic hub, and especially what I've seen tonight demonstrated by the students who spoke, I have to say, the Board, and hopefully this has changed, has not made a very good grade in their communication with the community as to the reasons and their rationale of what it is, is the obstacle. That's not clearly defined, and maybe... That's not clearly defined, and maybe they need to collectively be a little clearer for those of us who aren't privy to all the stories. So I just want to say that the board, in their power, can set a very good tone with the community, and in answering to their constituents of the students who are looking at them, is that I think that if they apply, you apply your behavior the way the students have to apply their behavior with the public, will do much better in communicating this to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Neil Becker. Welcome.
Welcome. I too love seeing this turnout. The conclusion of my piece actually addresses this turnout. So, thank you, President Breitman, the board members, and Dr. Wilcox. This evening, I begin by recognizing American Education Week and the thousands of Washington County Public Schools employees who toil on a daily basis to provide safe, engaging learning environments for the students of Washington County. To start, I want to share a brief story. Last week, I called my father, a Korean War veteran. He left Fordham University to enlist in the United States Navy. My dad turned 84 last week, and when I called him to thank him for his service and to wish him a happy birthday, he thanked me, but not for calling. He said, "Neil, teachers are the real heroes." There's no arguing with my father, so I accepted his compliment, and I pass it on to my colleagues, and a ton of them are here, they're the real heroes tonight. So thank you to all the educators, they're heroes every day. Teachers and their students have balanced an increased workload, intense standardized tests, formative assessments, and tight budgets. Teachers have sacrificed tremendous amounts of time to prepare lessons, work with students, and host parent conferences. Personal time before school hours, after school hours, and on weekends is spent creating assessments, units, lessons, scoring assessments, analyzing data, and working with a ton of these kids for rehearsals. Recent reports shared by the board's HR team cite the stresses of increased workload and work environment. In the spirit that is evident in negotiated agreement Article 1.5, titled Partnership Agreement, I've offered to collaborate with the HR team and create a workload survey. I extend that offer again tonight. Together, we can accomplish great things for the children of Washington County Public Schools. The last few weeks have been tumultuous for educators and education leaders. The governor's withholding millions of dollars in state funding. Washington County's enrollment is still declining, which impacts budgets. Park data has parents, teachers, and students on edge. The academic hub, as you've heard, has been a hot topic that's inspired a variety of thoughtful, even heated discussions. Topics as important as the hub deserve more input from a wide variety of stakeholders, and our democratic republic encourages just such discourse. These kids are showing you that here tonight. Now's the time for WCTA and the Board of Education to work collaboratively. In the best interests of the children who attend Washington County Public Schools, we must rebuild the lines of communication and the bridges of trust. If our relationship stagnates, if our relationship with the county commissioner stagnates, the children will suffer. We and the children cannot afford that. Thank you.
Next up, Thomas Geis. Welcome.
I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak. And I'd like to thank Washington County for having the forethought, the forward thinking ness, to have a school such as Barbara Ingram. As, up to the eighth grade, my daughter went to private schools in Virginia and West Virginia. And when it came time to look for a school to go to high school, she did the research, and she said, "Dad, I want to go here." So we came up here, and she did the audition, and she got in, and then we moved to Maryland and Washington County so she could attend the school. And I am really just floored. I never would have imagined that there's a school in which all the kids really want to be there, they have to audition to get in, they want to be there, they know they have to do the work to stay there. And to me, it's just amazing. It's an amazing community, and it's something that the community should be proud of. It's a real gem. And I think if you want to invest in Washington County, investing in downtown Hagerstown to enrich the school would be a good choice. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Jared Klein. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Excuse me. I am Jared Klein, a resident of Smithburg. And my issue for tonight has to do with transportation. My girlfriend and I enrolled our four-year-old daughter in a pre-K at Smithburg Elementary School this past summer. And after reading through and filing through the information packet that we received, we realized that our first obstacle would be transportation. Not only our home, but our daycare provider's address is well within the non, or sat within this non-transported area. And for those of you who do not know, this area pertains to a one-mile radius around the school that Washington County Public Schools has deemed to be a walking-only zone. The children are to walk, drive, or be picked up by a parent or guardian once their school day is over, but not allowed on a bus. Luckily for us, a friend was able to transport our daughter to and from school safely. Since then, she has acquired a job. We no longer have her to pick her, our daughter, up at the end of her AM session. After talking with our daycare provider, she said that there was a bus that drove by her exact address two times every morning, and she said it may be worthwhile to see if our daughter could get on that bus. With that in mind, I contacted Western, or Washington County Public Schools to see if this was plausible. I received an email with four or five different people carbon copied on it, and I was asked to give the school or daughter was attending, her name, her home address, along with daycare provider's address, and with this information, they could determine to see if they could help. I replied with our situation, and knew that we were within a one-mile walker radius, and would not allow our pre-K age daughter to walk, and could we please get her on the bus that passed by our daycare provider's house twice already. An hour later, I received a response that said, "I am sorry to inform you that we do not provide transportation in non-transported areas. We have reviewed both locations with our router and confirmed that both locations are located in the non-transport area." Obviously, I was not very happy. I replied with a rather lengthy email, and some of the highlights were as follows. I said, "We're looking for a way to get her to and from school, and all other children in this particular position to and from school as well." They have, see, a lot of the kids in a non-transported area are of age who can walk to and from. They have safety precautions put out before them, can walk with their peers and/or drive themselves. The fact that our pre-K age daughter cannot get on a bus that passes by her intended destination twice was a little crazy to me. The last thing we want to do is pull our daughter from preschool, but it may be our last resort. During that time, my partner also contacted the school to see if there could be anything that we could do, and both of her teachers and front office employees said that they would do anything possible to help. At the same time, under no circumstance would our pre-K four-year-old daughter be allowed to walk anywhere. This left our daughter in a catch-22 position. She's denied a way to be transported home from day, to daycare, and at the same time, she is not allowed to walk on her own, nor should she be allowed to. Two days had passed, and I had not received any correspondence from the initial Washington County Schools' transportation, and I sent another email asking if somebody could review my comments and concerns. I received no response, so I decided to call after two weeks of no more correspondence as well. Person that I talked to said that she was there to uphold what she had to do. She did not make the rules, and fixing this issue would be a lot bigger than what I could understand. I can understand allowing children from third grade and above to walk to and from where they need to within this one-mile radius, but not a pre-K child age, or even up until third grade. My issue at hand is this. People are encouraged by the school system get our children into school and learning as early as possible. We've been told no child left behind. We got our child in as early as we possibly could, and then she was left out in the cold when our transportation, transportation, sorry, issue came to light. It seemed very few people were willing to put in the work to find a new solution. I encourage you all to take a look at this situation and try and figure out a proper fix for our younger children. Yes, it is only a one-mile radius, but I also ask you to look at the already established bus routes. Possibly add three or four new bus stops in these routes for other children to have opportunities to enroll. The particular bus that runs the route past our daycare provider has five children on it. That's a lot of empty seats that could be filled for bright young minds. To all parents that are listening, I urge you to voice any and all reasonable issues that you may have as well. We would like to work with the board member, board members and workers of Washington County Public Schools to see if we can change throughout the current rules and regulations, whether big or small, to create a better environment for our young children and their education, both inside the classroom and out. To the board, I appreciate you all for taking the time to listening to my concerns, and I hope we can work together to find a way to get our young minds to and from school. Thank you.
All right, next is Tim, I'm going to massacre the last name, Horst. How badly did I do?
Oh, okay, okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Tim Harris is my, my name. Am I looking at a camera up here? Is that? Yes. Okay, thank you. I'm a father of five children, two of my daughters, one graduated from Barbara Ingram, and one attends now as a freshman. We've lived in Washington County for over 10 years now, and I speak in support of the academic hub. The academic hub, to me, doesn't go far enough, though, as far as the value that the academic environment brings to our downtown. And I've really appreciated some of the comments shared of the academic value, the economic value, and I'm really interested in if the board can help us understand on a broader scale where the support needs to come from. I think it's going to be obvious that the board is in support of the hub, but help us as a community understand how we can communicate appropriately, organize ourselves, to get the government, local government support that we need for this, countywide, and even state, if we can understand what communication's out there already, and how we might organize ourselves to do that. We'd really appreciate that. I came today, I'm a graduate, did graduate school at Johns Hopkins University, and just came from a biotech close to there, and University of Maryland Baltimore, visiting there. And Baltimore is a very similar, Hagerstown could be called a little Baltimore. And I see examples in Baltimore, that on every corner, almost, there's someone that has a homeless sign, some panhandler. And Hagerstown also has issues with poverty. There are centers of strength, though, in Baltimore, and Hopkins is one of those academic environments and locations are areas of economic growth and development. That is just a huge difference from areas that don't have those academic institutions. And I think if we can build on that example, that could really be a strength to our community. So I plead with you to help us understand how we can strengthen that, our pleading, our requisitions, or communication to our local officials. If you can do that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Gunther. Welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is David Gunther. I'm a resident of 13610 Curlo Drive, kind of in Long Island, but I would like to put forth my viewpoint on, as a student, on why Bispa should have the academic hub. And I know that there have been so many comments made tonight, but I feel like I should, and my personal story. I would ask those here to briefly consider the mission of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. That mission reads as follows, and I quote. "The mission of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts is to provide every student with a rigorous, comprehensive college preparatory curriculum rooted in intense pre-professional training in the arts that encourages excellence and success in their personal development as students, artists, and cultural leaders." That mission has given Washington County and Western Maryland an opportunity to revitalize the many, and Washington County and Western Maryland have also benefited from Tech High and some of the other programs. You know, even though I live on the north side of Hagerstown, my brother is involved in the STEM program, Williamsport, and he's absolutely loving it there, and he has his thanks for allowing Williamsport to do that. Now, I don't share this fact with everyone I encounter with, but I feel that it's worth mentioning that I have Asperger's, which is a form of autism. Not only is this sensitive to talk about sometimes, but I've had experiences where even mentioning my disability has suddenly skewed the perspective of people, and they've immediately taken me as someone completely different than who I am. If I were to invite you to ask somebody off the streets, or just someone in general to look at me, I'm sure that they would take a look at me, and at first glance, they would say, "He's a normal guy." The very fact that I'm considered normal today by other people, I attribute to the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. When I came to Barbara Ingram eighth grade, I had a rough year where, that was marked by several bullying incidents. Now, we did get those resolved, but I was left with damaged emotions. But when I heard about this school, I decided to take a chance, and I auditioned, and I got the letter, and during that summer, we found out from Kennedy, that from Kennedy Krieger that I had autism. And so we sat down with the school board at the beginning of the year, and we made a plan for myself. I said, "Look," and I took charge, and I was like, and I proposed that by the end of my four years here, I would be a completely different person. I would be more extrovert, that I would be a lot more socially involved than I normally am. I'm here now because I want to testify that Barbara Ingram is the perfect place to stretch out and test your wings. The safe environment that it perpetuates allowed me to trial and, to try and fail over and over again, until I managed to grasp how to start a conversation, or how to not go off on some random tension about something I was very passionate about, which happens a lot. I'm sure they can agree. Within the first six months, I found a group of people that I could call my best friends, and I knew that I had found my niche. That year, I started a journey of self-development that has taught me so much. I believe the county should recognize that Barbara Ingram and any of the other technical high schools have the power to transform a shy and picked-on eighth grader into a confident senior who is a member of the National Honor Society, the recipient of superior ratings from the Maryland State Solo and Ensemble Festival, and an Eagle Scout just last year, with more awards coming in from the scouting program for that. Recently, I am to be... Recently, I am to be awarded the, in 2016, the Meritorious Medal of Merit for lifesaving Barbara Ingraham was the key that enabled me to unlock that door and many other doors that have followed since. Recently, I just started, I just started the college application process, and I turned, I've got my first acceptance letter to Utah State University with a $14,000 non-resident waiver, with more scholarships to follow as soon as they follow up with me on that. Additionally, I just, I turned in my, my application for the University of Chicago and several other schools. If this is the kind of success that I can have, having autism, how much more can ours, without any other disability, grow? I just, my belief that, that any student at Barbara Ingraham or at the other high schools have the capacity to achieve this kind of growth and do many great things. But most importantly, I'm gonna speak about Barbara Ingraham for, here for a second. Barbara Ingraham matters to me the most because it taught me that my great, that my, that my Asperger's ultimately is not a disorder that imprisons me, that imprisons me for the things I can't do, but it's one of the greatest personal teachers I've ever known. I believe Washington County should take pride in the opportunities it has provided its students, and I again thank those who've allowed Barbara Ingraham and the other schools to fulfill their missions. Barbara Ingraham, as wonderful a place as it is, is limited in space, and we've known, and we've talked about this before, but we can only run on borrowed buildings in good faith for so long. I would close by asking those with the power and a proper authority to reconsider their decision to suspend development of the academic hub so that Barbara Ingraham and the other schools in the area can take, can continue with their missions of transforming people for the power of the arts and for the power of people's dreams. That is why they matter. That is why this academic hub matters. Thank you.[723.66][723.66](applause)
We have one more speaker signed up, Donna Hobson. Is Donna still here?
Is she signed up, or I'll be glad to speak?
Okay. Would be glad to hear. Your name's here, come on down if you'd like to.[764.69][764.69](laughter)
I think I am.
But here I am. Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Okay, extemporaneously. I'm a grandmother of a Barbara Ingraham student, Brenda. I have met all of these kids since they were freshmen. I have watched them grow. They are incredible, and frankly, I would love to see the hub because I go to pick her up often, and these kids go from class to class in rain and snow and bad weather, sometimes sunshine.[802.73][802.73](laughter) But this school has given so much to these students. Academically, it is outstanding, those that, yes.[817.82][817.82](applause) I've heard stories from parents, those that go in struggling, come out on top. They come out getting up, putting in applications to college, they get into colleges, as you just heard, huge scholarships because of their academic, outstanding academics and their outstanding arts. What they will give to society, they have learned not only from their home, they have learned from the family of Barbara Ingraham. I would love to see the hub, having been there and watched the students go class to class. I would love to see this for these students and for other students in this community. Thank you.[873.88][873.88](applause)
All right, we have come to the end of the list of those who had signed up. It is our habit of asking anyone else here that would like to speak to us. I would ask that if it is a different topic or a different variation on the theme that we haven't possibly heard, I would appreciate that. We have been here a little over an hour. I see some fingers pointing.
(inaudible).
Yes, ma'am, please come forward.[927.13][927.13](applause) Could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I brought notes, but I, I didn't know I was really gonna be saying anything because my daughter wants me to, so. My name is Carol Workman, and I'm a parent to Amelia Workman, a current junior at Barbara Ingraham. I am not a public speaker by nature, which you will find out, but felt the need to advocate on behalf of the school. To be honest, my daughter would be considered the public speaker in our family. This is just one of the many skills she has acquired at her young age by attending Barbara Ingraham and being exposed to excellent, excellent academics coupled with the arts. She has not taken one formal public speaking class as of yet, but she could speak to a group of hundreds, all because of the twofold skills she has learned from performing. She has learned diction, projection, and how to overcome the fears we all have, like myself, of public speaking. I use this as just one example of how an arts education transfers into daily life and other job skills. I feel I have a unique situation, well, somewhat unique, as my family made a choice two years ago to relocate to Hagerstown from West Virginia. The main reason was so my daughter could attend Barbara Ingraham. Her plans are to pursue a career in the arts as a college student, and we felt BISFA would be the best place for her. But even if that were to change, or she changes her mind and pursues another career path, BISFA still will provide the college prep environment and academic she will need. I can tell you, to this day, I have never regretted our decision to move here. Be proud of the school and other programs that this county and state provide, as I assure you, they are not offered everywhere. They were not offered where we moved from, and you should be proud that you have them. I, as well as other BISFA parents and community members, ask for your support of the academic hub. It will provide space not only for Barbara Ingraham but other school programs. Smaller learning environments are most definitely part of the school system of the future. These kids are your future leaders, they are goal-driven and service-oriented. We are passing on a different world to the, our kids than what we grew up in, as noted by the events of the past few days. Larger school environments are not a fit for every child. Children do fall through the cracks. Kids tend not to fall through the cracks in a small learning environment when teachers and staff get to know each student, and I can tell you, the teachers and staff know these kids. They talk to them every day. They know their names and so forth. In closing, BISFA has been successful since its inception, this county and the school where it made a commitment to it then, and it needs to fulfill the commitment it made. These students are Washington County Public School students, just like any other high school in the county. My taxes are the same as any other parent's. The University of Maryland will not be able to continue to provide space for BISFA to, to its own growth. These students need the hub. We do appreciate the continued support of those board members who voted for the hub and the community members who continue to support Barbara Ingraham. Thank you.[1122.65][1122.65](applause)
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
President Reitman, other board members, Dr. Wilcox. This is just to be, to thank you and to put it in the minutes that on, I guess, last Monday, November 9th, several board members came to Zion Baptist Church for an education forum. Would I like to say that my pastor, which is Ricky A. Smith Sr., is unable to be here tonight to continue that dialogue with Washington County Board of Education as far as the whole task force of diversity in Washington County and, and future meetings that we look at making changes, and, and I would recommend, one recommendation to the board members, that you look at the hiring process for Washington County Public Schools and that you revisit whatever tab it is where it talks about the hiring practices and procedures for Washington County schools, that you look at that again and see whether or not it is your responsibility and, and you do have a written plan as far as, when it comes to a final vote, that you make that call as far as the hiring of administrators, other coordinators, and other, and teachers for Washington County Public Schools. But I think more emphasis needs to be placed in the hiring process where the board themselves make and take a more active role in the hiring process for teachers and administrators of Washington County Pub Schools, beginning with next school year, 2016, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you.[1240.61][1240.61](applause) Yes, sir, welcome.
My name's Blaine Johnson. I'll keep it brief, and thank you for the, the time this evening.
Yes, sir.
Board members, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, I'm a proud parent of a BISFA student. In fact, like others that have spoken tonight, I'm very jealous of my son, who's been afforded the opportunities to attend a school for the arts that, like some of the other older generations such as myself, weren't afforded. As you know, BISFA is nationally ranked as one of the best schools in the country, as well as highly ranked in the state of Maryland. Already graduates of this program since 2009 have been placed on the national stage such as in New York and other art school programs and colleges around the country. Board members, you're given an opportunity to ensure that this unique opportunity is afforded to future generations by supporting the academic hub. I challenge each of you to honor and live up to your own vision statement by supporting the academic hub, and if I may, quote the vision statement, "Building a community that inspires curiosity, creativity, and achievement." As board members invested in providing these opportunities to future generations, it's your legacy. Wouldn't it be nice to be in a place where one of these students stands on the grand stage at the Grammys, the Music Awards Program, or at a book signing on, for a book that they had on the New York Bestsellers List? And wouldn't it be nice to be thanking you for that opportunity and the opportunity that was afforded to them by a decision that you make to support them? You've heard already tonight from some of the, the school students and parents that love this, this school and this program. Please support the academic hub and help those students ensure their place in history and your place in history as well by ensuring yours and their legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.[1401.01][1401.01](applause)
Thank you. My name is Patty Haupt. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but my son, who is with me, Nathan, is a freshman at BISFA. And I'm a Hagerstown resident for life. I was born and raised in Hagerstown, in the city, and still live in the city of Hagerstown. I actually grew up in downtown. My take, just a little something different, I'm also a professional in public safety, and my office is located in downtown Hagerstown. I certainly, in addition to that, my son graduated from St. Mary's Catholic School, also in downtown Hagerstown, while, while not public education, just in that arena. I certainly would never send my child to an environment that I would feel that it was unsafe. I worked there every single day. I am before the courts numerous times a week, testifying, and I work closely with their criminal element professionally. So knowing all those things, I still choose for my son, chose for him to take on this adventure and go to Barbara Ingraham. It has been a great experience so far in the short time that we've been there, and I second the notion that all the parents have stated here tonight, and students, it is a family. I know that going into any new school situation for a student is scary, and they could not have made it any easier. The academic hub that has been proposed for downtown Hagerstown really would encourage growth economically, professionally, to the downtown area. I go in various places in downtown for lunch every day, and I can see where Hagerstown has grown. It's changed so much since I was a little girl here. And I think having the hub downtown to benefit not just Barbara Ingraham students but other educational facilities in the Washington County would be huge, and the invite, the economic value that it would provide to downtown Hagerstown would be great. And the only other thing that I would like to add is, if it would be allowed, if I could just turn around and ask anyone who is here from Barbara Ingraham for support for Barbara Ingraham, just to stand up so we can see how many people are actually supporting it.[1543.54][1543.54](applause) That would be really all I have, and I think that speaks all I am.
Thank you. Okay. Is this another Barbara Ingraham statement? I think it is. Okay. At this point, please be seated, and we really need to see if there are any other topics after this young woman speaks, and then we'd like to probably close up this part of the agenda if we could. We've been here about an hour and 25 minutes, so go ahead, please introduce yourself.
My name is Dorina. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm an alumni at, from Barbara Ingraham. Currently, I'm working on my undergraduate degree in biology, and I'm striving to become a neurosurgeon. I know many have spoken here about the arts in, at Barbara Ingraham, and how many are striving to be art majors in whatever they are at Barbara Ingraham, but many of us are, want to have a career in other things besides the arts. I know a lot of my graduating class are wanting to become doctors, lawyers, anthropologists, it's just so many different things. And I know that for me, I would not be where I am today. I would not be the same person without Barbara Ingraham.[1654.83][1654.83](pause) At Barbara Ingraham, I was a violin major, so a music major, and being able to play the violin and being able to be in the orchestra and do the recitals that we do, that has helped me so much to become a leader, to establish who I am, to be able to speak out.[1682.61][1682.61](pause) In middle school, I was one of the really shy kids. I never really talked to people, wasn't really out there, didn't have many friends. But then, after I came to Barbara Ingraham, it all changed so much. After the first half year even of my freshman year at Barbara Ingraham, I could see the changes. I became a better person. I was more willing to do things. I was willing to stand up for others, not just sit there in the corner. And here today, I want to show you all that Barbara Ingraham is a great place. It prepares people for the future. It doesn't just give us the arts and to become better in arts, it gives us better lives. It helps us become better people. It prepares us to be leaders in our future. Graduates of Barbara Ingraham are the future. And having the academic hub would be a marvelous opportunity. You've heard so many quotes on how we have been at the top academically, and many of us, most of us, go to college eventually, and we get... us, most of us, go to college eventually, and we get just such great academic education. And with the hub, we could do even better, and we could do it for even more people. More people in this community would be able to strive and be the leaders of this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any... Ms. Allen?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. And at this moment, I just am beaming with pride because I sat on the 2001, 2002 generation study groups by the previous superintendent where the Barbara Ingram School of the Arts was just a blip. It was just a concept because we knew that there was a need to offer alternative instruction for the gifted and talented. And when I look at all these students here and their parents in support of this type of education, I'm just beaming with pride like it's my own kids. To digress a minute, I have a student who went through a gifted and talented program, but it was kind of self-directed because she left every day at 12 o'clock. She left North High. She traveled down to Bethesda to get her arts instruction. She came back on the metro. She came back on the commuter bus, and she didn't arrive home every night until 8:00, 8:30. And that was on a good night. If there was rain or there was snow, sometimes it was 10:00, 11:00 o'clock. So there was definitely a need. This student right now happens to be the lead anchor at a major news network in Louisville, Kentucky, and I attribute all of her training and her performing and her arts study to her profession where she is today because that level of commitment from this type of a student is unsurpassed. You've got a person who's got a passion, they are going to excel because they have that inner drive within them. I know that all of you have a very hard task before you because you're being asked to take a stance and to make a commitment on a new direction and to further expand something that has been so successful. I'm also a city taxpayer, and I'm also very concerned about the cost of all of this that we're talking about. And what I would like to propose is that you look at these students here and you look at what they would like to have, and let's think of an alternative way to achieve that goal. And I think there are ways out there to do that. We've got the University of Maryland Systems there. They have a lease. We could possibly extend that lease with them. We can look at alternative ways to try to accomplish the same goal that we have already started here and that these students are so deserving of. And I truly believe that if we put all of our collective creative minds together, we can come up with a good solution that will help us to further continue the education of this type of student and also not break the taxpayers' back because we're going to end up with a big bill at the end of the day. But I really do applaud all of these students here because they have worked hard for what they're doing, and their dedication tonight, coming out here, showing you, and speaking where it's not easy for them to do, is a testament to their passion for what they do and for the direction they'd like to head. Thank you.
I believe that takes us to the end of this agenda item. Would any of... The next one is the board member response to public comment. Would any of my colleagues like to respond at this time?
President? I won't be long. I just want to thank you all for coming out. It's... We've never had so many speakers at any meeting that I've attended, and I've been here seven years, and I think that speaks to all of your passion. I would just invite, and it's part of our role as board members, to educate the public about education, and I would just invite you to continue to try to educate the public about what the school means to you. I mean, we've heard a number of things in the last... There are a lot of misperceptions about the school, and I'll just tell you one that I hear repeatedly. It's the only reason it's so academically successful is because you have to be academically successful to even get into the school. People don't understand that you get into the school based purely on an audition without any look at your academic record, which to me speaks volumes about the power of the arts, given how successful you are academically. So I would just challenge all of you to continue to educate the people who have misperceptions about your school because you can do it far better than certainly we can. So thank you all again for coming.
Anyone else? Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, just very quickly. I'm sorry. I tend to take this off because typically I breathe heavily into it or something. Couple of things, if you don't mind. I can't tell you how proud I am of the young people that took the time to come here and speak. They were eloquent, measured, informed. I can think of so many other words, but those three stick out. So thank you. One speaker mentioned, you know, what do we do? Who do we talk to besides us? There are other entities within the city and the county that need to hear what you guys had to say tonight. That would obviously be the Board of County Commissioners. That would be the City of Hagerstown. That would be other organizations around the city who may or may not support this concept at this time. Let them know what you think. Don't stop here. Don't be afraid to continue to speak. Your voices have power. Somebody talked about our power. Our power is limited. Your power is not. You are the ones that can make the difference if you feel strongly enough about this and you convince enough people within the county to feel the same way. So don't be afraid to speak. Obviously, you're not. Continue. And as I said before, I've been proud of you guys for, since this school opened. I've seen a lot of your performances. I know what you can do on the stage. This showed me another side, and I'm blown away. Thank you guys for coming.
Ms. Fisher?
I thoroughly agree with my colleague, Mr. Ridenhour. I just wanted to add one more entity that you might want to contact, and that would be the state delegation. We have been... BISFA was done as a public-private partnership. It has been touted around the state because we are the first school system to do so. We are attempting to do that with the hub also, and our state delegation can give us some help as well. In addition to the people that spoke tonight, I also want to thank those people who have been sending us emails, sending us letters. I know some of you or some of the people that have sent us letters have also started to contact our local other officials, such as the commissioners. So thank you all. That's the way to continue. We need to get the message out and to the taxpayers as well. So thank you all very much.
Ms. Greenwald?
I'd like to agree with all my colleagues and all of their support and thank yous. I would just like to thank all the students that are here and came to speak and that use the hashtag #WIPESFAMATTERS. I mean, it's just if you don't have a Twitter, maybe you haven't seen it, it's honestly incredible to scroll through to see the video they made. It's just incredible. I mean, these comments here tonight, I mean, they gave me chills. I mean, a couple literally moved me to tears. It's just so incredible to hear what all these passionate students have to say. And just again, thank you so much for coming to share, you know, what you love. Just greatly appreciated.
Dr. Wilcox, you had wanted... Ms. Williams?
Certainly. I would just like to say thank you to all those who came out to share their stories with us, and thank you too to all those who have emailed or have contacted us in other ways to let us know your support for BISFA and for the academic hub. Thank you.
Dr. Wilcox?
Thank you. I think first to the parents and grandparents who spoke, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your faith in your children. Thank you for the great work you've done to raise them into fine young adults, and thank you for your continued support of this school system because you could have chosen to take your children elsewhere. But I heard some great stories today of people who actually have come to Hagerstown and settled because of Barbara Ingram. That was particularly heartening to me as a recent transplant to this community to know that others believe, as I do, that this is in fact a great school system. To the teachers, I can't think of a better American education gift than you got today. Quite honestly, to see these kids has to make you all just beam with pride because not only are they bright and talented, they're articulate, they're thoughtful. I will tell you, young people, you kind of lit kind of a fire in me again about the power of education in this community. You reminded me that education is alive and well, and I sometimes run into people who say, oh, no, it isn't. There's this wrong, and there's that wrong, and there's this wrong, and there's that wrong. But quite honestly, you prove to me you are living proof of the concept that we are doing well by our kids. And so thank you for that, young people. I have, you know, one other thing to say to all of you, and that is that I believe the majority of folks on this board believe that this is a great project. I absolutely think that they do. But we have not been able to gather the political will to bring it forward. That's probably a lot the responsibility of the administration for not painting a clear enough picture. We're going to continue to build that picture and... Gosh, it's kind of weird that I'm using our art metaphor here, isn't it? I guess there is power in the arts. BISFA matters. That said, I simply want to thank each and every one of you for coming this evening and spending some time with us because I have a lot of staff members who spend a great deal of time in this building, and they don't get a chance to see the product of our work. And I think you really heartened all of us tonight and will reinforce the fires that burn deep within us about why we have chosen to be in education. So thank you all for coming. The last thing that I have to say is that there is an elected official that took the time to come here today, and he has been a strong supporter of this project since day one, and that's Mayor Geisbert, who's standing in the back of the room. Mayor Geisbert? Mayor Geisbert, I want to thank you for your support, not only of this school system and of our young people, but also of our administrative team and what we're trying to do together. I think you're seeing a clear indication that the work that we are doing has great merit. So thank you, Mayor.
No final comments. I think we'll take a short recess so the auditorium can empty out unless you'd like to stay with us and listen to the rest of the business meeting.
We have some great new business.
Yeah, consent agenda's coming up next.
Don't you have homework to do?
...emergency generators in and where the funding comes from. And why that's more than just to keep the lights on at the school when the power goes out.
Okay. Williamsport High School is actually one of the high schools that we didn't have an emergency generator at, so this is a great addition to the school. We've worked with MEMA on this. The generator will be designed to support the school in the event there is a major power outage. It could even be potentially an emergency site if it was necessary. It'll power partial lighting and also maintain heat in the building to avoid any types of freezing or anything like that. There are rooms in Williamsport High School that are completely dark, don't have exterior windows. So it'll supply lighting and safety for students in that capacity. We're also able, because the bids come in so low, we're going to change the switchgear at Williamsport High School. It's a great opportunity, while we're doing that much electrical work, to change out the switchgear that at this point is over 40 years old. And it's going to just provide an excellent opportunity also to set up an emergency, an additional emergency generator could be brought in by FEMA or MEMA that would power the entire school through the switchgear.
Great. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for.
Any other questions? It is Mr. Reidenauer's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Student concurs with the majority. Thank you. All right. We're on the second consideration under new business, excess property. Mr. Trotta.
Congratulations on your new playground.
Thank you. I believe Dr. Michael is coming back up. Dr. Pugh. Mr. Rollins rounds out the team.
Somehow, we're a little out of our normal rhythm here tonight. I don't know why. Tonight, we're before you as staff requesting your consideration to excise three pieces of property. Consider returning those to the county. Those three pieces of property include the old JDC building, Conica Jig Elementary at the point that it'll be empty in July 1st, and Winter Street Elementary School when it's empty in July 1st. The JDC building is empty at this time, and it could be considered to be excised to the county commissioners as early as January 1st. And staffs here and available to respond to any questions you might have. We had a PowerPoint to the board at the last board meeting, two meetings ago, and also this morning for the county commissioners. With that, we'll be glad to entertain any questions you have. And we did write this out as three separate motions, so the board could consider action on each piece of property separately.
Exactly. Thank you. We will take these in three different parcels. There is a recommended motion there, but I'll entertain whatever motion is brought up. Mrs. Fisher.
Madam President, I move to transfer the former Job Development Center property located at 22930 Federal Lookout Road, Smithburg, Maryland, to the county commissioners effective January 1, 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. A second?
Second.
Please.
Mrs. Williams, you get the second.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion. Questions? All right. Going right to it. Approval of that motion, Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Student concurs with the majority. Second motion, we're talking about Conica Jig Elementary.
Madam President, I move to transfer Conica Jig Elementary property located at 12408 Learning Lane, Hagerstown, Maryland. I'm not sure it's in the town of Hagerstown, but maybe it is, to the county commissioners effective July 2016.
They're shaking their heads on Hagerstown.
It is.
It is in the city of Hagerstown.
Well, it's a Hagerstown address.
Hagerstown, got it. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Harding. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Reidenauer, questions? All those in favor, please signify. Seven zero. Student concurs with the majority. That takes us to Winter Street Elementary. Is there a motion on Winter Street?
Madam President, move to transfer the Winter Street Elementary property located at 59 Winter Street, Hagerstown, Maryland, to the county commissioners effective July 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Questions? Comments? Question is on Mr. Reidenauer's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Student concurs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Mr. Trotta, you may want to stay.
I do.
Okay. We're moving on to Board of Education Advisory Committee appointment.
Thank you very much. Ian Rotz was appointed by the Board of Education to serve on the Ethics Advisory Panel. The term of each of the members of the panel, their terms have been staggered to maintain continuity. Ms. Rotz's current term is scheduled to expire. I am requesting that Ms. Rotz's term be, to serve on the Ethics Panel, be extended for the period from November 2015 to November 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Requires a motion.
Madam President, I move to approve the appointment of Ms. Rotz for membership to the Board Ethics Advisory Panel.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. A second?
Second.
Fisher. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please signify. Seven zero. Student concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to number four, consideration, Mr. South. Recommendation to reclassify $180,000 from the restricted fund balance to the committed fund balance.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. At a recent meeting, the Board's Finance Committee discussed the amounts in the various restricted and committed fund balances. One of the balances discussed was $180,000 that a previous board had restricted for facility repairs. That restriction was made nearly 20 years ago. In the years since that amount was first restricted, WCPS has made numerous facility repairs and has not needed to use this money. Therefore, the committee agreed that this specific restricted fund balance is not needed. Additionally, the committee members agreed that these funds could be better used to provide an incentive for increased participation in the public-private partnership program. As a result of this discussion, the committee requested that I bring a recommendation to the full board to reclassify the $180,000 of fund balance that is currently restricted for facility repairs to the committed fund balance for the public-private partnerships. That being said, I bring that recommendation to you at this time.
Thank you, Ms. South. Motion?
Madam President, I move to reclassify $180,000 from the restricted fund balance to committed fund balance for public-private partnerships.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Any questions? Comments? Yes.
With the deferred maintenance that we have, my question would be, why haven't we had use for $180,000? I mean, was it something that was just overlooked? You say it's been there for 20 years, and in 20 years, we've...
I don't think it was overlooked. It was basically earmarked for emergency repairs.
Emergency.
And not for deferred maintenance.
Follow-up?
No. I appreciate that clarification.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion? Seven zero. Student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to number five, consideration, executive staff salary action. Dr. Wilcox will lead the conversation.
Thank you. This evening, it's my pleasure to recommend a compensation increase for three members of the executive staff. I want to point out to the board that all of the staff increases for fiscal year 2016 have now been completed for all of our bargaining groups. This is the last group. They serve with me as we prepare our negotiation strategy. They also provide intimate detail around those strategies. So now it's my opportunity to recommend a compensation increase for them. The budget increase for them is projected at 3%. The total budget implication for this is $14,133.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. A motion, please.
Madam President, I move to approve an increase in compensation for the executive staff for FY 2016 to be equal to the step increase provided to the central office of administrative and supervisory personnel and be effective as of July 1, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. A second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Questions? Ms. Harshman.
Last year, did we have the number or the percentage that the administrative and supervisory staff received for a raise?
This particular group received 4%.
The other group at that time?
Slightly over 3% when it's calculated. The average, I think, is about 3.13%.
Okay. And so we did not assign the same amount to this group?
We did not last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Question is on Mr. Reidenauer's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero, and the student member abstains. That takes us to the amended agenda, number six, superintendent's salary.
Madam President, I move to approve an increase in the superintendent's compensation of 3% of his salary to be effective July 1, 2015. And direct Mr. Trotta and legal staff to prepare the appropriate documents to make that change to his contract and to direct you as president to sign on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Dr. Harding, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Any questions? Dr. Harding, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. Just, Dr. Wilcox said that his executive staff was the last group. Actually, they weren't the last group. He is the last group of employees who haven't had their salary addressed this year. We haven't had any discussion of this previously, whether in closed session or open. If Dr. Wilcox is uncomfortable with us having this discussion, he said that he didn't mind us having the negotiation of his salary done in public, so I took him at his word. And so that's why I made the motion to amend the agenda and to offer the salary increase. I chose 3% because it's what he has provided to his top executive staff as well, and it's roughly what a step is for an administrator. So that's my rationale, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mrs. Williams. Because this has been an item that has been added to our agenda, we don't have any figures to know what amount that 3% would be, and I'd like to know what that amount would be. And I'd like to know then what that would bring his total salary.
Mr. South is coming up.
Thank you.
A 3% increase to superintendent's salary would equate to $6,241.
And that would bring his total to?
That would bring his total base to $214,283.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Mrs. Harshman.
And the 3% then is in keeping with the administrative and supervisory raise, supervisors' raise? Is that correct? Is that what we were trying to do here?
It is equivalent to the...
It is.
Okay. And last year, he received?
I don't believe I have that figure. I just, I don't have that figure with me. I'm sorry.
Was it 6%? That's what I had written down. I wasn't sure.
I do know that there was one year that he did receive 6%, and I believe that was in deference to the one year that he received zero. He has received, I think it was, to date, an average of 3% per year.
Any other questions? Okay. A question before us is on Dr. Harding's motion. Everyone understands the motion? All those in favor? Five. Those opposed? Two, and the student abstains. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. South.
Yes, ma'am.
We're moving on to number seven, and it's an item, whoops, that was brought up a couple meetings ago, and we didn't have all the information in front of us, but it is based on our legislative priorities, and that is the Commission on Education, Finance, Equity, and Excellence. MAEVE has put this forward, as well as a significant group of other stakeholders that are all involved in this reevaluation of the per pupil cost, state funding, as well as compensatory aid, and the geographic cost of index, plus some other factors as far as transportation enrollment. And this is very similar to what was done back in 2001, 2002. Very similar configuration as to the First Thornton Commission. And the only difference from the paper you were given in your packet and what was supported by MAEVE has been given to everyone. And basically, that's adding another group, another individual representing the Association of School Business Officials. So I would like to have a motion supporting this proposed legislation.
Madam President, I move to support Maryland Association of Boards of Education's proposed legislation entitled "Commission on Education, Finance, Equity, and Excellence."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify. Seven zero. Student concurs with the majority. Thank you. That moves us, that's the end of our new business, and we're now with the superintendent's report. Because of the lengthy first portion of our meeting, we have delayed the number-two college and career counseling update for another meeting, but Dr. Wilcox does have some update information.
Thank you, President Reitman, and thank you for acknowledging that Ms. Handler was ready to go, but we asked her to step back, just in deference to time. I've also asked Ms. Francisco to participate a little bit this afternoon, and I've also asked her to be brief in her comments as well, but we will go in-depth with any of you at your convenience. So let me begin by, first of all, beginning and saying to all of our employees and team members in the district, Happy National Education Week. This is a great week for us to step back from kind of the hustle and bustle of the day-to-day work and say thank you to our teachers, thank you to our support staffs, thank you to our administrative teams for all that they do for the young people of this community. I would encourage people who are watching this meeting at some point in the near future to also take time to say thank you to the people who make great things happen in our schools. From the bus driver who greets your child with a smile in the morning, to the teacher and the administrator who walk them into class and teach them well throughout the day, to the food service team who make sure that our young people are well-nourished, to those people who are in our after-care programs, I simply want to say thank you. Tomorrow is also a very special day because it is the one day that's set aside for our ESP support personnel. We hope that the teachers, as well as all those who use their services, will also take time to thank those employees within the district. It's also important for me today to bring to the board's attention that recently Chick-fil-A, under the ownership of Randy Scott, saw to it that all of our bus drivers started the day with a hot chicken biscuit and a glass of juice. It was just his way of saying thanks to all of our transportation team for what they do. Dr. Michael and his staff were also present. What was really inspiring to me was to see the camaraderie between Barb Scott, Dr. Michael, all of those people who work in the front office of the transportation team with the drivers. Because oftentimes, we hear sometimes that there's discord, but that was not evident as we handed out breakfast that morning. So again, Dr. Michael, this Scott, thank you very much for your leadership, but also to all the bus drivers. If you've ever tried to drive your family away on a vacation, you know how difficult that can be with kids in the backseat. Try doing it with 60 kids following behind you. It's difficult, yet our bus drivers do it with great skill and talent, running millions of miles over the course of a week, and they do it flawlessly. You just don't hear of us losing kids in the middle of the day. You don't hear us leaving people on bus stops, on corners. So thank you to the transportation team. Another thing that's been in the news recently is our diversity training and the importance that we're placing on the effort. And so I've asked Ms. Francisco to come forward and just say a few words about what we're doing to engage our community, but also to help our staff become more culturally competent.
And I will be brief. Thank you. I think it's important to know that our training program that we began at the beginning of this year is well underway. We have trained approximately 575 employees from all different departments so far this year in a highly interactive, intensive, two- or four-hour training, depending on, you know, what position you're in. There'll be another upwards of 750 employees trained this year. This is an ongoing effort. We don't consider this to be something that will be done. We will evolve our programs and continue training. In addition, though, we have hired a recruiter in human resources who is really focused on improving the diversity of our workforce. We're looking at historically black colleges and universities and Hispanics-serving institutions. We will likely be on campus at five or six HBCUs this year. We're building those partnerships. Someone from Trinity College in DC reached out to us today to try to build a partnership. Trinity is a college that really focuses on serving African-American and Latina women, and so building a partnership with such an organization that is so close by would be a great advantage to us. We are planning a diversity day for April, and I believe you received some information about that in an update, and our staff received some information about that as well, specifically targeted at trying to reach minorities, as well as our critically hard-to-fill positions, and working on building that. We continue our work with the Diversity Task Force. We're also building a group of local employers to kind of have a diversity coalition in the community, so it's reaching out to other places that employ people, not just the school district. We are sending a Diversity Task Force member and three staff members this week to Washington to the National, I want to get this right, National Alliance of Black School Educators. Their national conference is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week, so we are sending a contingent to that. And we are planning a community conversation in one of Dr. Wilcox's Parent University events to be scheduled for later on this year, where we'll have a facilitator come, facilitate a conversation about diversity with the community. So I'm going really fast, but those are a few key events that I think, and initiatives that are important for people to know about.
Thank you, Ms. Francisco. And again, board members, we will spend time in a workshop discussing with you, or we will spend time at your convenience to talk to you about any one of those items. We also would look to you to help us think through the issues, particularly as you participate in some of the forums and community meetings that are taking place. That brings me to item five of my report. Thank you, Ms. Francisco. We are going to announce in the second semester, well, we're actually announcing tonight, the creation of a new community outreach, which is called Parent University. And in Parent University, we'll try to meet three times in sites across the county, making it convenient for your constituents, but for our parents and their immediate families to participate in a series of meetings where they not only learn about services, facilities, some of the hot topics that are going on, but have an opportunity to interact with staff, ask questions, and get their questions answered, really in, I think, an informal environment that is responsive to some of the things that we're hearing about our new move to paperless report cards, to college and career readiness, to some of the issues that are relating to testing. So we want to do that. Perhaps most importantly, we're going to try this format out sometime in December at a location to be determined, but we're actually thinking about doing it downtown, perhaps at Barbara Ingram, or perhaps across the street at the Bridge of Life, where we would announce a community meeting to really begin talking to me about the budget priorities for 2016 and 2017, so that as I prepare my budget for you, it's informed by community input. As you all know, as board members, I've talked to you already about some of the things that we have to consider. You know, one is fully funding a salary pool. Is there something we want to do beyond that salary pool? How are we going to address health insurance costs that may be projected in excess of 3%? What will we do about our retirement plan shortfall obligations? How are we going to address the other post-employment benefits contribution that we have to get in line with our projections? How are we going to address the increases in school and district supply lines, making sure that our young people and our teachers have the tools that they need to be successful in the 21st century? In the next couple of weeks, we're going to talk to you again about the digital learning plan. I think as most of you, as board members, know, when we last met, to talk about that, I was presented with a series of challenges to overcome, and we've spent six to eight months now talking on a pretty regular basis about how we can advance a digital learning plan in this community that makes sense for all. Now, that's going to have some funding implications, and so we want to see not only what the community thinks, but ultimately, we'll ask you what you think once again. We also want to talk about next-generation facilities, so we'll be talking about CIP projects. We're going to be asking the community to weigh in on these issues and see what trade-offs can be made in order to get to some of these things. Things like our recruitment and retention activities, our commitment to diversity and training. How are we going to meet the needs of an ever-expanding pre-K population in this community? What are we going to do to fund contingency teachers so we can deal with enrollment lists that come up from time to time, as this board has faced? We also want to talk about some of the community-funded activities that we participate in. For example, just recently, the leaders of Children Village have approached us and said that viability for them is an increasing concern. Would the school system be interested in taking over Children's Village and advancing Children's Village for the next generation of kids in this community? We also know of some other things that we need. If we have a digital learning plan, we're going to have to increase our technical support, and that was one of the things that came from board members. If you're going to have all these new devices, the staff that we have now that's already heavily loaded down and working hard, how can we complement them with staff of additional help to help make these technology initiatives roll forward? And I will tell you tonight that one of the things that we've talked about and will come through this budget process, I believe, is a recommendation from staff that we repurpose one of the principal ships that we are giving up to the closure of Conica Jig and Winter Street, and turning that into an equity and achievement gap specialist, someone who is absolutely focused on not only closing and eliminating achievement gaps, but helping us with some of our community relations issues and some of the development issues that we face as a system. So again, these things will come through Parent University, and then they will come to you as a board. We have some other things that we'll share tonight, and I'll just be very brief because I know time is of the essence. But number one, many of you have heard, because of the ISIS threats, the terrorist threats, that there may be some move on Washington DC or the greater Washington DC area. We have a number of field trips that go there each and every day, and so we are monitoring that closely. I've sent something out to all of the principals today, and I have forwarded a copy to you as board members as to the safety and security issues that we face and how we're going to address them. I want to say to the community members who are watching, your children's priority, your children's safety is our number-one priority. We will not send children into harm's way, but we want to be thoughtful about the educational value of these trips, and also, I think, as a community, we have to be resilient that we can overcome the darkness of terrorism. I would also like to leave you with one thought, and that is Thanksgiving break is coming up. This building and all of our schools will be closed on Wednesday, the 28th, Thursday, the 26th, and Friday, the 27th. Classes will resume Monday, November 30th. And my final item is simply this. Dr. Harding, you're not somebody that I can actually talk to anymore. I didn't realize that saying that I would be open to open negotiations would come up tonight. I will, I'll first say thank you to the...
You said it to the newspaper, by the way.
I did.
Okay.
I'll first say thank you to all of you, even to those of you who didn't support it, because I understand you would have your reason for doing it. I think our team is doing incredibly good work. I'm humbled by the fact that each and every day, I get to work with a great team of leaders. But I also want to tell you, it's very uncomfortable to sit up here and have that conversation take place, because your worth is being valued. And I simply want to say thank you. And I simply want to say thank you. Thank you for your belief in me, and thank you for supporting my family, and ultimately for saying that the work we're doing here is good work, because I know this board would not advance a compensation increase if you didn't believe that the work we were doing was good work. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. All right, that brings us to personnel. Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review and approval this evening.
Thank you. A motion on personnel action, please.
Madam President, I move for the approval of personnel actions recommended by staff.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Question is on Dr. Harding's motion. All those in favor? Seven abstention would be the student member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, reports to the board. Curriculum and Instruction. Mrs. Harshman.
Curriculum and Instruction did not have a meeting since our last business meeting. We will, however, plan to have a meeting on Tuesday, the 24th of November, at 12:00 in the Board Conference Room. The agenda will be posted, and any changes will be, will appear on the website.
Thank you. Facilities. Mrs. Williams.
Yes, Facilities has not met since our last meeting. We will meet on Tuesday, November 24th, at 12:00 noon at Williamsburg High School, and our meeting there will include a tour of the new construction, which I think is to be completed by then. They're close.
Thank you. Mr. Guesford, Finance.
Thank you. We will be having our next meeting November the 24th at 10:45, and I ask my colleagues if they have anything for the agenda, to please let me know.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher.
Thank you. Policy Committee met yesterday. We discussed policy IKFB entitled "Graduation Exercises." Currently, this policy is on hold until we can get some more current information on the practices that have been used. It is a rather old policy. It appears to be quite outdated. We also discussed questions posed concerning the policy on our student board member and recommended a few changes. It will be coming back to the Policy Committee on November 24th before coming to the full board. Next, we considered policy BD entitled "Types of Meetings." Staff will research other LEAs for their policies on various meeting types. The policy needs significant updating and additional details on each type of meeting. The open meetings laws and rules will need to be considered in updating this policy and in adding an additional type of meeting, which we had discussed some time ago. There were no comments received on the table of contents for a board handbook, so staff will begin gathering material for possible inclusion in the first section, which is entitled "Foundations." And our next meeting is also November 24th. It starts at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. HR, Mr. Ridenhour.
HR will be meeting, excuse me, the 24th at 8:30 in the Washington room, Washington Conference Room.
Okay, any other reports? Mabe?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
No worries.
Ms. Greenwall.
Washington County Association of Student Councils met November 10th at Western Heights, and I'll just give you some of our highlights from the meeting. We were able to announce our executive board and our committee heads. I personally, with the officer team, made students aware of the proposed changes to BCAD, as it does affect small elections that will be coming up here soon. We were also able to have Dr. Wilcox attend, which we were very grateful for, and continued our conversation on the, our tobacco spice partnership that is going on right now with Dr. Kehanek and Dr. Pugh.
Thank you. Sorry for skipping over. It's been a long evening already. I apologize. All right, any other reports?
Two things.
Yes, sir.
I forgot to mention the Veterans Day observances. I just want to say that across the system, there were great observances. I've annually attended the Clear Spring event, which, quite honestly, is one of the most fantastic things that you will experience as a school superintendent, or certainly as an adult who believes in the power of public schools, to watch those young people interact with the veterans in that community is an extremely powerful experience. But also, as I began to see in the papers, some folks who were, you know, kind of calling for perhaps a different approach to how we treat Veterans Day. I asked our principals this morning to provide an outline to me of how they observe Veterans Day. And within about two hours, I received 30 responses of the 46 schools, talking about what they did to honor veterans on Veterans Day, the lessons that they taught, the way they exposed our young people to the sacrifices that the men and women who have served our armed forces have made. I'm quite proud of the effort that the system has made around Veterans Day. And I would challenge folks who have not been in the schools that before they suggest alternatives to the day, that they spend some time in the schools on Veterans Day to see what we do. And then we can have a deeper conversation about the timing of some other events in the community, where it may be simpler for some of the community-based organizations to move theirs to a later period in the day, so our kids can actually have two doses of Veterans Day celebrations. And then finally, and the Good News Department, Smithburg's volleyball team, will their semifinal game tonight, so we're excited they're playing in the state championship once again.
Thank you. Moving on, we do have an additional agenda item, miscellaneous business. Mr. Ridenhour, you had requested that—
Yes, ma'am.
—agenda item.
I made the motion, as all of us are aware, there has been an extensive email thread that went on for five days in regards to adding an agenda item. The agenda item that I mentioned, it came from Mrs. Williams. The email thread went on, and to my point of view, it degenerated and devolved as it continued. There was a, I don't know, not a misunderstanding, but a disagreement over how something like this should get on the agenda, so I wanted to make sure it got on the agenda so that Mrs. Williams and anyone else who has a concern about the Administrative Regulation GBEE-R as it relates to a Facebook, Facebook post and its likes and comments could be spoken to. So I would cede my time at this point and ask the board, the chair, to allow me to respond later to the individuals who wanted this on the agenda initially.
Mrs. Williams.
Certainly, yes. Back some time ago, five of the seven of us on this board had a hand in crafting a document called "Communication Processes," and Section F of that document speaks to communication and social media. Recently, there have been posts and comments to posts on social media that I feel violate the spirit, if not the letter, of these rules. I feel that these posts and comments have impugned the integrity and character of fellow board members. I think they perpetrate lies, they cast dispersions, and I think they join in and support hateful comments that have been made by a very bitter individual. And I would ask my fellow board members, what does that do but to add to the disharmony, the mistrust, and feed into the dysfunction? So I would ask that we be respectful of one another in what we write and post and comment on, on Facebook. I think we should hold ourselves and each other accountable. I think there's a way to do that, and I think there's a way to do that respectfully and civilly.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Other comments at this point?
Could I ask specifically, I think I know the answer, but specifically what the post was that you were offended by, or why this has been brought before the board at this particular time? I can read to you, I mean, what I said, if you would, just for this, for a point of reference for anyone who might still be awake and listening. Add the agenda item. You made that comment shortly thereafter. Mrs. Harshman responded to that, and in her comments, she said, "Clearly, this image," and I'm assuming that is the Facebook post, "show those who support the irrational, inexcusable behavior that was present during the last election and in the years that followed. There is no defense for any professional on the school board to engage in such activities, and I firmly believe the citizens will agree. I am amazed that any reasonable person would contribute to this lunacy. Perhaps the operative word here is reasonable. This should be open for discussion," and I think the ALS meant also, "in addition to continual use of cell phones during meetings, embarrassing to say the least." So I'm assuming that that Facebook post that you're referencing was the one that Mrs. Fisher shared with me from Mr. Minor regarding the lack of a second during the meeting, two meetings ago?
That would be one of them. Another would be comments that have been made by Mrs. Fisher on a WC Parents post?
I'm not going to, well, okay. Let me go on since, you know, I'll speak to mine, because I did, although I did not comment, I did like it. You know, let me explain a couple of things, and, you know, I could go around this in a very judicially and legally correct way. I could say very simply that I liked what Jackie sent me, that she sent me an article, did not necessarily mean that I had any belief that that article was wonderful. But I could also say, I think we have to understand as board members and people who write policy on occasion that the first, you know, that, excuse me, that policy never supersedes constitutional law. And there is a Supreme Court decision on the books, and I remember it because I taught it. And the Supreme Court decision was Tinker versus DeMoyne. And in that decision, just to paraphrase, the court ruled that First Amendment rights do not stop at the schoolhouse door. So consequently, you know, my right to a First Amendment action, something, you know, protected by the First Amendment, cannot be taken away by a policy created by the Board of Education. And I'm not going to apologize, though. I'm going to go a little bit farther. I'm not going to apologize for liking what Mrs. Fisher sent me, because in many ways, I agreed with it. I could think of no way, after that meeting, under no circumstances could I figure out why a simple asking for an amendment to split the minutes so the student representative can vote on them would not get a second. I was clueless. And to be truthful with you, even at the next meeting, when there was some discussion about this, I still was clueless. A second would have allowed a discussion, which would have allowed me to make a point as to why I thought this was a good idea, and would have allowed anyone else to make a point as to why it was a bad idea. And third, you know, this thing about any reasonable person would contribute to this lunacy. I'm not seeing how liking a Facebook post, which I think spoke to a possibility as to why this went on, is lunacy and tries to paint, is trying to paint me and my liking as an ally of the individual who wrote the post, and paint me as someone who may possibly be supplying Mr. Minor with information. I find that absurd, and I find that difficult to swallow, because I don't think there is anything that I've ever written or said that would indicate that I am, I support everything that he says. I supported this particular item, because that is the way I felt. I felt there was no excuse for it. I also, with the cellphone, I think I've stated publicly, when this was added, from the start, that I am still working. I will take calls from clients, my office, because I still have financial obligations. I still plan to pay my bills, and I don't walk away from my obligations. So, you know, although that may be something that is connected to me, there is a reason, and I've explained that reason before, and for someone to tell me that's embarrassing that I would do that, I find that offensive, too. I find passing notes between board members to be annoying. Yet, I don't raise it to a level that we have to have a board conversation or a six-day, seven-day email thread over these issues. And I would remind, I would like to read something that I received, a Facebook post from four years ago. It was the night that I was elected president of this body, and a board member stated, "Yesterday, Jim Jones Kool-Aid was passed out, but I refuse to drink. Thank God for giving me parents who taught me my worth does not come from following those who obviously lack leadership skills." That individual has a right to that opinion. It's funny, too, that that individual who wrote it also got a like from another member of this board. So I find that offensive. I found it, you know, the fact that I was being, you know, labeled, you know, and connected to a psychopath who poisoned hundreds of people, I found that offensive. I find that, found that difficult to swallow. During that whole Facebook, or the whole thread that went on, it degenerated, folks, to a point that I couldn't believe it was going on, and I would like to thank Mrs. Fisher for finally saying that, you know, "I'll second this motion if this comes to the table." I mean, there were a couple of things that it said. There was almost an accusation that there was a conspiracy going on to keep this from coming to the, to the board's attention, because the president continually said there is a need for an amendment to the agenda. The agenda had been set, obviously, when the last meeting was over, the next agenda is set. The next agenda is set, in my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong, in my opinion, you need to amend the agenda. If that hasn't been followed in the past, and I was sitting in that chair, I offer my apologies, but I'm not going to go around and say, you know, because we're not amending the agenda, it's clear what's happening here. What was happening? I don't know what was happening. That sounds to me like somebody believes that there was a conspiracy of some type. And I also saw another part of this thread where it says, if you're, to Mrs. Brightman, the president of this body, "If you're not willing to add our concerns without amendment, then every item should be an amendment." I'm not sure how that works. Now, does that make sense? No, no more than refusing a member to have an item added prior to a meeting. Then it goes on to get a little bit ugly. "Time is running out for you to make amends for those you stepped on to reach the top. Remember, you will see them again on your way down." There was another, in a, in a letter to the editor, something that was very troubling to me.
Are we planning to stay another hour, because I'd like to—
Madam President, I have four. If you wish to gavel me, I accept your—
I'd like to take another break, then.
Madam—
You're welcome to take a break, Mrs. Harshman.
Thank you.
Comment was made, "I have touted to school board, touted to school boards all over the state the positive relationship between county commissioners and the Board of Education." I'm— I'm devastated how quickly that relationship has been tarnished by thoughtless words and accusations that only serve to place a wedge between two entities and should, that should be working together for our children. The he-said, she-said situation is distasteful to me, because I'm a proponent for fairness. Unless someone will testify under oath to hearing those words in the private conversation in your column and all related articles, should be filed in the waste can, where it belongs, where trash belongs." To me, that's basically saying that the president's lying. I don't know how to take it any other way. There was another post recently, after a Freedom of Information request was passed by a citizen. One of our members said, "I think you know my position on those who have placed a psychotic puppet in our midst. As I understand, there's an extensive investigation going on about threats, badgering, illegal use of board email for personal attacks, bullying, and much more, as well as on contact, as well as on the contacts at the board who are contributing to this extremely hostile situation. Those responsible will be brought to them to the light and exposed for what they are. Until that time, I can only apologize for those responsible and hope that they will be replaced very soon, as I am here to support children and edu, our educators and our community with no side agenda." I don't get it, folks. I'm sorry. I don't understand. I don't know of an extensive investigation. Maybe somebody can give me information that I'm not privy to, but I don't believe there's an extensive investigation going on of anyone that I'm aware of, but maybe I don't know. There was also an ex, an exchange that I found troubling. This had to do with a personnel action that superintendent was involved in. Said Clayton, "As I stated before, I don't think there's one person who knows the circumstances of," and I'm redacting the name, "who believes this was not retaliation. I'm sorry I've not been able to respond in a more timely manner." Dr. Wilcox has said, "I'm not sure I understand the reference to that individual." To me, that's borderline, well, I won't, that's just my opinion, so I will not go with an opinion. I mean, I could go on, since everybody seems to be in a, in a hurry, I will stop and reply to any questions that may come to me about what I have presented, but at this time, I cede the floor to my colleagues.
Mrs. Harsman.
I would like to know where you got the information on the Kool-Aid. It was not on.
What?
It was not on.
On what?
The board email.
What was on?
The information on the Kool-Aid, where did that come from?
That came from Facebook, Mrs. Harsman.
Yes, but it was not on the board email.
Madam.
And how do you know I was talking about the board?
Well, let's see, it was December 11th.
I'd be real curious to know.
December 11th.
Excuse me, it's my turn.
Okay.
I have the floor.
I'll respond.
I would be real curious to know why you are so paranoid that you think everything I have to say is about you. Now, isn't that amazing? Because I could have been talking about many things. I belong to other groups besides this one, none quite this dysfunctional, but I will say there are some other groups. So, for you to automatically assume that that's who I meant speaks volumes to me. The other thing is, anything else that I posted on there, everybody else got. You don't need to read them out loud. If somebody wants them, they can send into the board and get those emails.
Yes, they can.
So, I don't know what you're bringing them out here for. When I bring the picture, do you want me to bring the picture of you sitting at Ryan Minor's fundraiser? That's a good one. I like that. Peter Perini handed that to me at one of the board meetings. So, you know, when you talk about not supporting someone, and yet you go to a fundraiser, and yet that person comes in and speaks the same things that you try to tell, I believe that there is a connect there, and I will believe it until I see differently. So, that's where we are on that. You know what you did, I know what you did, you know what I've done, and I know what I've done. And anything that you don't like, you can just forget about, because I'm not changing. If you think I'm going to edit the things that I say in order to convince you that something is a certain way, you're wrong, because all I speak is the truth.
Madam President?
Mrs. Harsman, are you finished?
I am finished.
Finished.
No, I will respond. It, just as.
Unless I need to respond.
Just as it is apparent to you, Mrs. Harsman, that somehow, because I was at a fundraiser prior to an election, where that individual lost, by the way.
Terribly.
Be that as it may, that individual lost is no different than my making an assumption that a Facebook post, one or two or three hours after I was elected president to the board, can easily be attributed to my leadership and me.
You may look at it how you choose.
Yes, but it makes, it, I think it speaks volumes also, just as you think what I say speaks volumes.
Thank you. I'm glad you liked the quote.
So, be that as it may, there was an awful lot of things that I read here today that were on that thread, which is public information, by the way.
Absolutely.
So, you know.
So, you don't need to read it here.
Well, I certainly have the right.
Mrs. Harsman, look.
To read it here, considering.
Go right ahead.
Considering, the first thing that you said to me was, and to us, "This image shows those who support irrational, excusable behavior that was present during the last election and the years that followed. No defense for any professional on the school board to engage in such activities." I'm still waiting for you to explain to me what those activities are, other than that I was at a fundraiser, which, by the way, I don't think I gave him any money.
Really?
Yes. Do you want to check my?
I wouldn't know.
Mrs. Harsman, he has the floor. Let's, this is in the dialogue. Go ahead.
No, I'm, so, the fact that I read these into the record, that's my prerogative, based on the fact that I was being questioned about a Facebook post and a like, heaven forbid. You know, I have the reputation of being a serial liker on Facebook. There are very few things that I don't like. And in this case, I will admit, I liked the post. I'm not embarrassed by that, and I'm not going to take it back. I was very honest with you. I liked what was said, because I'm still, to this day, confused by what happened that Thank you, Madam President.
Sir, Mrs. Fisher.
First of all, Mrs. Williams, your original comment was about the post that I sent to Mr. Ridenhour. Just now, you have added an additional item to your issues. I will reach out to you personally by phone, as our norms recommend, to address this additional item that you have just mentioned tonight, as I need to, to look at it again before I respond to you. However, the night that was in question, Dr. Hardings and I were both absent. And I was shocked when I did return and learn that members of this board refused to second an amendment that was given to alter the minutes, to allow our student member to vote on the business meeting minutes, because she's not allowed to vote on the closed-session minutes. I just couldn't fathom why this was done, other than perhaps to show the members who were here, as well as, I guess eventually, the absent members, that three people could shut down a vote. In answer to my sharing that particular post with Mr. Ridenhour, I will say the following things. I did not create any blogs or videos about any board member. I'm talking about this one item that you first mentioned, Mrs. Williams. I did not contribute to any blogs or videos about any board member. I do not request any such items be sent to my Facebook page. These just were sent to me.